Any questions at this time before we go to another appointment? Okay. Mr. Burns.
Yes, don't show your position.
Um, that was a replacement, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, replacement.
Okay, at this time, we've got Mitch Givens. And he's with the Empowerment Alliance.
Yes.
Natural gas infrastructure.
That is correct.
So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Givens.
Okay. I've got a couple of documents to give to you and we're just kind of walking through these real quick, but.
Thank you.
A little bit of background on on the empowerment alliance, so. Thanks again for your time. Again, my name is Mitch Givens with the Empowerment Alliance. I'm based out of Columbus. I'm actually an Ashland native. I grew up on West Walnut Street.
Oh.
My house doesn't stand there anymore. I think the Lutheran church bought the land and knocked it down. So that was a sad day and I went to Ashland University and moved to Columbus in early nineties and started working in politics and um, actually worked for the auditor state Jim Petro and Matt Miller was my intern. In the office, so.
That a couple of years ago?
Yeah, it's been it's been a little while ago. So uh, but I've been involved, uh, you know, in in politics and and really focused more on energy. Uh, I've moved into the energy sector a lot in the last fifteen, twenty years. So um, I deal a lot with particularly with natural gas. So um, the empowerment alliance uh, exists primarily to promote the benefits of natural gas. Um, and I've got the the kind of the little mini PowerPoint sheet here. So just uh, and this is not particularly what I wanted to talk to you about. I want to talk to more about our infrastructure study, but I did want to highlight just some of the benefits of natural gas that we don't hear about because you know, so much of what we hear about nowadays in the media is on uh, windmills and solar panels, which hey, that's great, but uh, it's not what's powering uh, keeping our lights on, our hospitals running, our factories running. Uh, what's doing that primarily is natural gas. Thanks to hydraulic fracturing. Uh, natural gas output has increased tremendously since two thousand and five because of the technology, the increase in technology. Um, and with the the number one driver of of lower air emissions now is now is a result of natural gas, not wind and solar. Um, in fact, natural gas has dropped emissions uh, in our air fifty percent more than wind and solar have since two thousand and five. And uh, the increased use of natural gas in Ohio has uh, dropped our remissions by over thirty percent. So um, it gas, gas is a much cleaner fuel um, than coal, you know, and and we're not criticizing coal, but we all know coal is basically being regulated out of existence and coal plants are closing and likely to never come back. So we have to ask ourselves, how are we gonna replace that baseload generation to keep our economy running into the future? And and while wind and solar are supplementing the grid, um, they are intermittent sources of energy. They rely heavily on battery power to store energy when they can't run at night or when the wind's not blowing. So really, the the natural gas is the only fuel right now that can meet that need. In addition to nuclear, but nuclear has its challenges too with with regulation and costs and and natural gas is just uh, it's it's cheap, affordable, abundant. Um, so from an economic standpoint, um, the natural gas industry employs about three hundred and seventy-five thousand Ohioans at about sixty-six thousand dollars per job. So uh, those are are high paying jobs. The the natural gas savings to the average family is about two thousand five hundred dollars a year. That includes energy costs. Uh, lower energy costs, lower heating, heating bills, uh, and what have you. So um, not to mention, natural gas is used in virtually every product that you know, we see, you know, the the laminate on this table, the flag, the polyester, the flags, uh, the materials in your jacket. I mean, when you look around the room and everything includes petroleum, natural gas products. Uh, so they're very important uh, from a material standpoint. And I really want to get into the the abundance issue, uh, abundance and energy independence because natural gas, we have a ninety-year supply of natural gas in this country right now. So we have enough gas to remain energy independent without any reliance on uh, oil or 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 anything from, you know, Saudi Arabia or any other country. We we are totally independent uh, uh, from an energy standpoint with natural gas. Uh, with our current technology, we have ninety-year supply and we expect that number to go up as the technology improves. Um, as you're probably aware with hydraulic fracturing, in the old days, you if you treat this table as, you know, uh, five square miles, you'd have to go down, drill multiple holes to get to the the oil and gas. Now, one hole, one one well in the center, you go down thousands of feet below the water table, concrete, steel encased pipes, go out thousands of feet or miles even, um, and and capture that gas and bring it back up through one wellhead. So the environmental impact is 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 decreased tremendously. Um, so it's just, it gives us the energy independence that we need. And and from a security standpoint, um, you know, it's nice knowing we don't have to rely on other countries. If you look at, you know, what's going on in Germany and Great Britain now, uh, they're in a real bind and their energy prices have just gone through the roof. Uh, they're opening up coal plants that they had closed before because they can't get natural gas from Russia, which they were highly dependent on. Um, so we are blessed and fortunate here in the United States to have everything we need right below our feet. Uh, and it's clean and 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 available and and inexpensive. Um, so really what I wanted to talk to to you about is point number two, three, five is maximizing natural gases potential. Um, we're the empowerment alliance has been, we've been in discussions with Jobs Ohio, uh, with Columbia, with Dominion. Uh, and and also I know you're you have a private uh, company, uh, you're you're a member of a co-op, I think, and you procure your gas from a a co-op.
Consumers or a consumer, okay.
Yeah. It's a consortium or something, okay. So you know, we're, we have no uh, skin in that game. I mean, we're, we just want to see more natural gas used. So um, what we're looking at is we're talking to all the groups and I'm actually gonna be talking to some of the the independent owned uh, natural gas providers as well. Uh, about how do we increase infrastructure? Um, you know, if you look at the Ashland uh, county map, I mean, you're you're fortunate, a lot of counties in western Ohio do not look like this. They've got one or two lines running through them. But Ashland, you have a a good amount of infrastructure, particularly in the southern part of the county. But I, when I was talking with, you know, Dominion and Columbia and and a couple of those other groups uh, in Jobs Ohio, um, Ashland came up as one of the target uh, counties where they feel like could use more infrastructure uh, because they get a lot of requests for, you know, whether it's industries that want to move in. Uh, and and you would know way more about this than I do. Um, but you know, in order to uh, attract industries in your county, you you have to have the gas lines to to do that. I was just over in uh, Logan or Harden County yesterday. And and you know, in Logan County the day before, and their problem is, is you know, they said, we have companies that want to move in, we have roads, road infrastructure. Uh, you know, we've got the workforce, but they look at our gas infrastructure and they say, we can't build a factory there, we can't build a facility there because we don't have gas. And so it's the chicken and egg scenario. What what do we uh, do we build the line and you know, is it sort of the if you build it, they will come to uh, you know, to quote Kevin Costner or uh, or is it, do you wait until you get the commitment from the company? And then you build the gas line, but then the companies don't want to wait. So what we're we're trying to.
Years, they'd have to wait on it.
Yeah, exactly. So what we're trying to figure out is a policy solution where how can we encourage, uh, give uh, you know, give counties and and local folks the ability to install those pipelines. Uh, because they know if they do, they're gonna attract business. So uh, we're working with Jobs Ohio to put together an infrastructure study, statewide infrastructure study on natural gas and to see, you know, identify what areas need it the most and then how do we pay for that? And and then look at, uh, is there some sort of state legislation that we can uh, work to to pass to to get the, you know, funding for that? And you know, that that gets to be the issue always is who pays for it? Um, because the gas companies, as you probably know, um, you know, they want to know, we're gonna get a return on our investment. Um, you know, the the companies feel like, hey, we're buying gas from you, why are we paying for the line? You know, that's your responsibility. Uh, and the local taxpayers typically don't want to get stuck with the bill either. So you know, I we're trying to figure that, skin that cat on how do we, is it an issue where we spread, spread the cost across uh, to to everybody, where everybody has a little skin in the game or, you know, how that's gonna, you know, how that should work. So that's kind of what we're dealing with. But I think the first thing is, is we want to do this infrastructure study to take it to the legislature to show them, hey, there's a demand and we can see, you know, if we can see uh, huge development uh, around the state, if we had increased access to natural gas in certain pockets. And how do we get that done? So really, I just wanted to to come up and and talk with you about it and um, and 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 just to kind of ask, just off the top of your head, are there any areas of the county that you kind of feel like could see increased development? Um, you know, I know you've got areas, particularly along, uh, you know, thirty or up up north, two twenty-four, where you've got good road infrastructure or rail infrastructure. Uh, are you seeing any requests?
You know, we've struggled to have enough gas it just in our industrial park to uh, to help with growth. And also even on the east side of uh, going out towards seventy-one.
Okay.
So.
Out towards the McDonald's.
Yep, out in that area.
Yeah, with a lot of development going on out there.
There's a lot of development and uh, companies looking at expanding, but with the with the issues of not having enough gas, that puts a squelch to it pretty quick.
Yeah, and I look, you know, when you look at Ashland, you think, you know, there's a, there's a lot of infrastructure, but I think the problem that a lot of counties like Ashland deal with that have existing pipelines is they're at capacity. And so they don't have enough gas to meet the needs of more development. When they could see more development, they're just tapped out, you know. But to the average person, if you looked at that map, you'd say, compared to most counties, Ashland looks pretty good. Um, especially in the southern, you know, southern portion below, you know, below forty-two. So.
I know in the northern part, uh, up in the Jackson, uh, Northern Orange, going clear over to uh, Richland County, that's consumer co-op.
Yeah.
And they're not only using the methane gas from the landfill.
Oh, yeah.
But also tying in natural gas from uh, wells in the area.
Yeah.
So I, and I know they're expanding, so. They're they're clear over into Wayne County now.
So kind of what I'm hearing is, is that your your industrial park exists kind of areas that are seeing development already that we know about, just are
They're they're near the capacity.
Underserved. So it's not necessarily other areas where, you know, up in up in the north, you know, near New London, just south, I mean, there's not a.
I don't think there's a lot up there.
Still in the main areas, it's just just need more, but in the areas where it's already, already, there's already infrastructure existing. And that's the.
That's all Columbia gas down.
That's Columbia gas. Okay.
He's down in the Hayesville area.
Okay. Yeah, and that that's the one of the big issues that, you know, if you talk with with Columbia and Dominion and those groups, it's it's, you know, hey, we've got the lines now, but they're just, they're not big enough. We need to, we need to get bigger lines in. And you know, the, a lot of the environmental groups tend to want to fight that. In fact, there's, there's, there were as an effort and a couple of years ago and and thankfully, we were able to pass a law to to stop that, but where uh, you know, groups wanted to stop any further uh, expansion uh, of of lines where you go in and re, you know, increase the capacity of a line. Um, so Ohio has been pretty friendly uh, as far as that goes compared to a lot of other states. If you look in, you know, east coast states or California, there's just a lot of restrictions and, you know, Massachusetts or New York, for example, they don't want any new pipelines because, you know, they, but I don't know how they're gonna power their gr- how are they gonna power their grid and and keep the state running, but um, you know, fortunately, we don't have that problem in Ohio. So so um, that's, this has been helpful and if there's any, uh, if you think about it and and you know, you want to email, I'll I'll leave my card here, but if the as we, as we uh, start this study with uh, Jobs Ohio, I'll follow up with you and just kind of say, hey, we're gonna do, if you've had any additional thoughts since we met, feel free to share with me because we we want to make sure we're, my goal is to capture the areas that we need to be looking at and I'm just gonna pinpoint those and then take all our maps to the 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 group that's doing the study for us and say, here's where we really need to be looking and we want to make sure that Ashland's a part of that, so.
It's Loudonville, uh, is that Columbia gas?
I can't tell you.
You know?
No, I don't.
You know, Jim?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I do have a read, a gas map on.
What did I say? Cumberland.
Industrial park.
Yeah, that's right. That might be Cumberland gas.
Yeah, okay.
Down that way.
Yeah, there's a lot of pockets in the, I don't have that level of detail on this map, but I can find, I can find out, but. Okay, great.
But yeah, I I would say the two that I mentioned, that's that's the biggest thing in our area.
Yeah.
To enhance growth.
The industrial park, um, which is, which industri- is that?
You're out there, out two fifty.
Okay, on the bypass area, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Right, yeah, that's uh, where the old like Bosch plant was.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's several different companies in that area.
Worked at the Bosch plant, um, well, when it was the Bud Company, actually.
Yeah, yep.
So he he worked there and then ended up being the plant manager uh, with Lee Reinicki, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's he's a character.
Yeah. Well, I, I recognize the name.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any questions for Mitch?
I got quite a few questions for Mitch.
All right, I'll wait till he gets up to the microphone.
I do, I do.
Um, I love questions.
Well, some will be easy, some won't be. Uh, I will, I know uh, that uh, the wells, the 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 gas wells down the Mifflin area, um, are being abandoned. They want to be abandoned by TransCanada.
Okay.
Uh, so so I guess I don't understand.
Mifflin area?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't understand why we would be abandoning wells, uh, if we were trying to produce more gas and get more users. And and the reason I have a concern about that is, you know, those those leases were done, you know, back in the fifties and sixties, I believe, is when that started. So all the the farms and the houses have been providing natural gas as part of the lease agreement.
Oh, okay.
Well, when they close those wells, they have no way to heat their homes.
Okay.
You know, so so that puts a huge burden on those those homeowners that have gas wells. There's a lot of them down that area.
Yeah.
Have gas wells, you know, on their farms and 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 so I I guess I'm concerned why they're closing those. In TransCanada, obviously, is a transportation, like instead of Columbia gas.
Yeah.
Uh, so have you heard anything about that or, you know?
I haven't, but I will.
That doesn't seem to work with trying to produce more and have more gas available when they're closing wells down.
Yeah.
Uh, or storage wells, I'll put that, the storage wells.
So they're stor- okay.
They're storage wells, yeah. Yeah, they've they've got a big place to close, a bunch of them. Um.
Yeah, I don't know if they're, if they're just, you know, older and not uh, efficient, but I I will look into it. I know TransCanada's uh, government affairs people, folks, I work with in Columbus, so I'll I'll talk with them and get back with you.
Yeah, cuz I've got, I've actually, I know several people, including uh, one of my daughter's places are 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 uh, gonna be shut down.
Okay.
And it does create.
So you know, have to go transition to propane?
Figure out something, yeah.
Okay.
You know, and and everybody knows propane's nowhere near as efficient as natural gas, uh, from a cost perspective. And I can see there's lots of them down there that they're abandoning. Um, the other question I had is. Yeah, yeah, it's a big deal to those those farmers and everybody that's set their whole operations up for that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that natural gas and now when the wells are gone, they won't get them. You know, I know silage, you know, guys are doing silos and drying corn and.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have natural gas.
Yeah, well, I would, yeah, it was just in Harden yesterday and and you know, they they almost exclusively use propane to dry their grain, which is really costly.
That's out in Big Farm area, too.
Yeah, they have no access to gas. So that's what, you know, they really would like to see gas for that very reason. If you're a farmer and you have natural gas to dry your grain, it's, that's a big cost saving.
It is a big advantage, it is. Yeah, cuz you know, BTUs aren't as much and.
Yeah.
You know, price per BTU is way up there.
But I I'll look into that and.
And and the other thing, as I was watching uh, the price of natural gas uh, go up and down, kind of like a yo-yo this year a little bit. Um, you know, I've seen it dip down to four dollars, I've seen it get up to eight or nine dollars. Wh- when I had some discussions with with a few people, their belief was the reason uh, that we had that fluctuation in that short period of time was that we were exporting so much of our natural gas that we have to compete against that price of Europe now.
Yeah.
You know, so it dropped to four dollars an hour because, or four dollars at one point because uh, the uh, filling station, whatever you want to call it, uh, to fill the tankers had had a fire. So now, so we were backed up, the gas, the price drops.
Yeah.
They could get more gas than they could sell and then it goes back up because we compete against uh, the gas suppliers with Europe.
Uh, yeah.
That that concerns me.
Yeah.
I mean, for twofold. One, you know, you say that we have nine-year capacity. Well, we don't got nine years if we keep shipping.
Yeah.
You know, thousands and thousands of, you know, gallons of natural gas overseas.
That ninety-year number is based on, uh, includes export, you know, projections as well. So and we do get that question a lot. In fact, I've talked to the Manufacturers Association because a lot of the manufacturers have that question. Hey, if you're exporting this gas, isn't it driving up our costs?
Right.
And you know, what I would say is, is no, it's not because the the big drive, the the big issue with the cost of gas gets to be uh, regulation, the ability to have installed pipelines. Um, because if you, the the problem that we have in Ohio right now is is that a lot of that gap, we're producing, have the ability to produce a lot of gas, but it's trapped in eastern Ohio because of the infrastructure issues and getting that out. And you know, so when you've got, like with the you with the Biden administration and not to get political, you know, shutting down pipeline uh, construction. If you have no way to move the gas, then your production levels go down.
Right.
Because why are you gonna produce it? What are you gonna do with the product when you have no place to put it?
Right.
Um, so they just end up leaving it in the ground. Um, and then consequently, the prices then go up because you're not producing it. So you know, that that's what we're, that's why we're really trying to improve the infrastructure is because that will drive prices down because it'll make it more available. Um, the amount of gas that, you know, we're shipping, uh, the, you know, LNG exports is just, it's not consequential, in my opinion, to the price root to to of natural gas for the average consumer. That's not really the issue. Um, you know, it it is, they, that's true, we are shipping more gas LNG exports to Europe. Uh, number one, because Germany needs it, because of the, because of the Nord Stream pipeline issue. Um, but it's not nearly enough uh, to impact the 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 price in a major way, I would say. So really, it's 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 an infrastructure issue. Um, if you can't, if you can't get the gas where it needs to go, you're not gonna produce it because, you know, you're under so many regulations and on on how to get that gas out of out of the area. So that's the biggest issue. And in my opinion, if you talk to the producers, that's exactly what they'll say is, you know, if we if we can't move it, we can't sell it, why do we, you know, because, you know, back in the, when the shale uh, play really opened up in Ohio, if you remember, we had rigs operating all over eastern Ohio. And now we only have a few operating just because the demand has gone way down. And then and another issue has been um, subsidies for wind and solar. Um, you, we had probably ten natural gas-fired power plants that were built back in the late, you know, in two thousand, early two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen. Um, those have really slowed down now. I don't know that there's any natural gas plant enter construction right now. And those are big users of of gas. Uh, and and a lot of that's because of uncertainty with the administration and how wind and solar subsidies are impacting, uh, you know, everybody wants to, all the utilities want to go wind and solar because they they recover the costs for the building, you know, building those facilities. So if you're a, you, you know, if you're an investor-owned utility and your number one objective is your shareholder, your your stock price.
Right.
Um, you know, shareholders want to see, you know, they want to see more green energy because it's in vogue, it's the thing, you know, it's it's the flavor of the day. And and so uh, you see a lot more, that's why we're seeing a lot more wind and solar development. But the problem gets to be there is is you see, like with what we had in, happened in Kentucky, a couple of month, you know, last month or two months ago, you know, they had some brownouts happen uh, because of they've they've cut, they've shut down a lot of their coal plants and they haven't replaced that capacity with natural gas. So they've relied more on renewables. Well, you know, you're not gonna, you can't power your grid on on renewables. It's just, it's a fairy tale. So.
Right.
Uh, so that long answer to to your question, but yeah, I think the big issue is is infrastructure. If we get more infrastructure, you know, it gives us the ability to just like a, you know, if you build highways, semi-trucks can move more product and you're gonna create more products because you're moving it and it's no different with gas. So.
Is this an association of, like, companies, transportation companies?
No, you know, uh.
Yeah, what's your organization? Explain to me.
So the organization, you know, we're, we are a coalition of groups that have an interest in utilizing more natural gas. So, you know, and it's no secret, if if you, you know, look on online, um, you know, uh, Tom Rastin and and with Ariel Corporation has has been a major supporter. Um, you know, they, you know, in Mount Vernon, they they produce uh, compressors to push the natural gas where it needs to go. But you know, their their motives are, you you know, I think the motives are uh, very pure. It's, you know, we need to to dispel the myths that are taking place with renewables, that we're gonna be able to power our grid with renewables. Uh, we need to, we need to keep uh, the pressure on the administration to allow more infrastructure development of pipeline because that's really what's gonna uh, empower our communities to grow economically. Um, so you know, that's what we're, that's what we're all about. And and you know, we do take a pretty hard-line approach with renewables because we feel like the country's being sold a bill of goods when it comes to renewables. I mean, we're being told that we can, you know, go to a hundred percent renewables uh, by crazy people in Congress. And it just, you know, the Green New Deal is is, like I said, it is a fairy tale. You know, you and and, you know, just from a logistics standpoint, the only way to power your grid with wind and solar, and look, if you can find a way to power your grid on wind and solar, um, then eh, then great because it has zero emissions. Now, when you get it, but when you get into the production of the battery, it's where you get into the production of the battery power in order to store enough power. I mean, if you think about how much battery power you need to be able to run your factories and hospitals and everything else and your homes and buildings um, during times when wind and solar aren't operating because they don't, they just, the sun goes down and the wind stops blowing. And what do you do? The, so so what currently, the answer to that is i- is you store that power in batteries and then when the sun, you know, when the, when those resources aren't running, you use the battery power to then power the grid. The problem is, is the battery power, you know, battery power uh, requires a lot of uh, metals, you know, cobalt, lithium, tremendous amount, you know, and then there's very high demand for those materials right now with all the electric vehicles. Uh, you know, every car company seems to be moving, you know, Ford, GM, not not to mention Tesla, you know, all moving towards battery because it's the popular thing to do, even though you plug your car in and you're getting your power from the full plan of the gas. So it's kind of ironic. Um, you know, I saw a picture the other day of a of a Tesla in California and it was plugged into a a a gas-powered generator to charge it.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Yeah, again, back in the big up.
But the bottom line is, is it, the, so the the metals market, eighty-five percent of the metals mined to produce the batteries uh, are controlled, they're from China or the market in Africa or South America is controlled by Chinese companies, eighty-five percent. So the question is, do we want to put ourselves in a position where we are dependent on Chinese metal, precious metal production for batteries to store energy uh, when we need it? Or do we just want to use natural gas that we have right here? And again, we're, you know, if we can find a way to store that energy, uh, you know, without using, you know, battery power.
Yeah.
Then great. I mean, who doesn't want to put a solar panel up and say, hey, it's free energy, it's from the sun, it works. Uh, but until then, you know, really, natural gas is the only only way to to do it. And and you're not gonna turn out the BTUs. A megawatt of of solar and wind is not the. A megawatt of of solar and wind is not the same as a megawatt of power from coal or gas. It's, you get a much higher output from coal and gas uh to power the grid. So you're not gonna run a steel plant on.
No.
You're not gonna run a steel plant on windmills.
Nope, that is for sure.
But I will, I'll make a point to talk to TransCanada. I know their folks pretty well and I'll get to the bottom of that, at least get you an answer. So I don't know what the, what it'll be and, but I can at least get back to you, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other questions?